We're going to call to words, the August 11th meeting of the Schmoken City Council will start with the pledge of allegiance and allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on the nation, on our heart, indivisible, with liberation and justice for all. Okay, roll call.
Councilwoman Arnold. Councilman Andrew Gammits.
Here.
Councilman Caleb.
Here.
Councilwoman Boyer. Mayor Hockley.
Here.
All present in the camera floor.
Do we have any presentations?
No sir. Excuse me, I thought you were... You... You... I was going to do that after they were swimming.
Call it out.
I started in your presentation, I don't know how, but I am scheduled to let me take my office and review business.
Oh yeah. Yeah, you made a picture.
Okay.
Yeah. You mean?
Yeah, they have the...
Hold on. So no, no presentation? Do we have any bills? Do we have any correspondence? Okay, citizen comments contingent upon business listed on the agenda. Okay. Okay, minutes, do we have a motion to accept the minutes from the July 14th council meeting?
I'll do the public. Do you hear the motion?
And Laura, what's that?
Roll call. Councilwoman Arnold.
Yes.
Councilman Gammits.
Yeah.
Councilman Caleb.
Yes.
Councilwoman Boyer.
Yes.
Mayor Hockley.
Yes.
Motion carries demands.
Next would be bills. Do we have a motion or questions on the start of, we have both of them, July and August?
June and July.
June and July. June and July.
June and July.
June was approved.
We already approved two of them.
Okay.
We did, we tried to find that. I think, uh...
Yes, right.
Yes, but I still give them copies.
Right, did we have any questions as we, they already announced the topic?
No questions on June, but July, I just have one question, that is, check seven nine five seven, I know that's not much, but what is a T-12?
A lot.
A lot?
That's not even...
It's time travel.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I have three. So, check number seven nine six seven nine seven eight, Keystone Communications.
That's for the outfitting of a Tuesday.
Okay, okay, I thought that, but at the same time I need to be wrong. Then we have seven nine six five Miller Gas and Oil Service, gas and diesel for the fire crews. Just, that just seemed a little high, was there a special reason for that?
There's a special reason.
Okay. And then, uh...
I'll be back to you. Please.
And then it's check number seven nine eight, Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry, just the SWI.
State workers insurance.
Okay, that's all right, I wasn't sure, but the, the initial, that's correct. Then, that would answer my question, does anybody else have any questions on the July?
So, any, any question?
Motion to, to pay...
I'll make a motion.
How's that?
So we have a motion to accept it. Roll call.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mr. Gammits.
Yes.
Mr. Caleb.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor Hockley.
Yes.
Motion carries demands.
Okay, record reports, accounts, and finances.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is the July report from our treasurer, Grant Stambro. Beginning with total general balance fund for August, to August 2025 is $1,553,438.21. Total, total number license balances 313,642.77. Total library balance, $20858.37. Total sinking fund, number one debt service, $344,187.13. Total sinking fund, number two recreation balance, $424,024.44. Total street lighting balance, $13,480.35. Total American Legion balance, $87.6. Total neighborhood mitigation fund, $49,277.13. Total food department credit card, $2,631. Total police department credit card, $844.26. Total balance in all accounts of $2,502,470.13. This is respectfully submitted by our treasurer, Grant Stambro. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Arnold. Parks and public buildings.
Okay, you got a minute? So, but during the summer, this is a fun time of the year, uh, I just, I gave everyone, I gave council members and just made a full monthly report, uh, for the month of July, uh, they had an attendance of 4,790 people showed up this July. Average of 110 per day, compared to last year, it's 64 more people that showed up this year with their average. Uh, there are only two slow speeds because of weather, and that was seven, five, and, or July 5th and July 19th, they closed early on the 8th, 14th, and 34th, 31st due to, uh, a lack of, uh, free train, so it stays, so. Um, we did that, um, night swims, they had, uh, Larry's Cross today, 178 people showed up for that. The night swim for United and Splash, 318 patrons showed up. And the night swim Christmas in July is one of the biggest swims for a night swim, 494 patrons showed up to it. Very nice day. Uh, free lunch program with them, uh, June, they had 1,700 lunches that they gave out to the kids. July, 1,810, and they're approximating about 945 lunches, uh, for the month of August. The final day of lunch services will be August 17th, it will be open back to school. Uh, but there's less pool days, the pool operations won't be Sunday, August 17th. Uh, and that will be water aerobics will be August the 19th is when they finish, end of 22nd. That, they're having one more night swim, and that is the pep rally for Schmoken. They're having a high school cheerleaders day because they're all going back to school. They're going to have a pep rally there on August 21st and 7th and 9th. Uh, it's going to be with football cheerleaders and band, this is an open event, $2 for adults, not for students. And the last thing, of course, is Chief's Favor, and that's the ball swim. That will be the last event, uh, for the official last day will be August 23rd, 12 to 5. And the cost is $10 per dog, and they must have their rabies vaccine, uh, papers, in words, what's in it. So, uh, and that'll be this last day, what's that called, pool in the pool this couple weeks? So that is a fun time there. Okay, that's for the pool. Uh... Yes, yes.
Uh, is it an issue with, like, action and freezer?
No, I did not.
No, in a freezer or something?
Yeah, cool, no, I did not hear about this, I will find out, I'm better than you.
I, I think it was a minor thing then.
Because normally if you have to pass a lot of instructions, you work on it.
Some...
Yeah, I, I never, I didn't hear about this either, so I'll bet, I'll bet on it, I will get you, but I'll let you know. Uh, let's see. Okay, food distribution program, uh, for July, that was very well, uh, because the last one in July, we, we served 159 individuals on, uh, that was July 25th for the free food distribution. Unfortunately, uh, we were looking to have August 22nd, for Friday, August 22nd, for our next free foods distribution. Speaking to CSL, there is no state grant right now, there's no state funding. So therefore, with, with that still on hold with, uh, Harrisburg meeting, it looks like we might be postponing our next free food distribution. So as soon as Harrisburg lets that food go, then the food banks will get, CSL will probably get their money back. Right now, there is nothing yet for the food distribution. If anything happens beforehand, I will get a hold of Mr. Slagey, I will get a hold of City Hall, and we'll get the word out as best as possible to let people know. But, uh, that's what I'm told right now, it's still on hold. Upcoming events, August 15th at Elimination Station, they have a Schmoken Film Festival. And that will be showtime, will be around 7:00 PM, but you are, you have to deal with, uh, wind delaying. Because they're going to be using the projector, so they're looking at 7:00 PM, but that's sponsored by the Artisan Alley. I believe that this is local films, uh, from, from area submissions that will be around this, it looks like a good time, so I, I encourage people to show up. They're having it Friday over at Elimination Station, and I believe they're getting awards out that Saturday at Artisan Alley for, uh, so that looks like a fun day, so if you got a chance, uh, 7:00 PM is when it starts, I think they're going to be there around 6:00, 6:30, so if you want to meet some of our local talent. Come on down. Uh, August 23rd, I will let Mr. Bigwigs talk about that, it's exciting news, I don't want to put anything on there. But I did bring this up at the workshop, and I just want to give a shout out to, uh, August 23rd was supposed to be, um, Music in the Park. Well, Mr. Spots graciously, and you know how hard it is, you get a band, especially M&amp;J Big Band, it's a big band. Then you try to go through their schedule, and they were gracious enough to actually quit that the next day. So Music in the Park will have M&amp;J Big Band, 3 to 5, at Claude Keeler on Sunday. So we, we've got really a lot of spectacular things going on that weekend, so I, I just can't wait. I was going to lay the flags down along the lawn here on that weekend, but I thought I'm going to be so busy with the going to eat some pizza, why not the week? So, uh, I appreciate it, and I think that's all I have at this time.
Thank you very much. Street and public improvements.
The only things that I have is that, uh, citywide line painting has been completed, which includes all parking and handicap spots. The downtown waterline project anticipated to be done and complete by the end of September. And Kevin was successful in obtaining the power source, and he's brought for the event at the end of August. And that is all I have.
Thank you very much. Public safety. Yes, okay, so, one, I have the firefighter fires. We have seven, rescue, the emergency medical service, there are five. Activist condition, one. Service call, eight. Put in ten call, twelve. False alarm and fire, false calls, seven, and special incident, eight, two. Yeah. Okay, code enforcement office monthly report for July. Rental registrations is 1,150. Total revenue, rental revenue is 1,150. So total parking permits is 900. Bumper permit is 300. Teller's permit is 180. Chisone permit is 180. Um, excavating permit is 500. Uh, violation code tickets is 300. Third party inspector is 1,538. For a total of, all, total other permit, $2,698. Violation code tickets is 300. Full per citation issued through code offices, 6,616.8 cents. For total revenue collected is 11,648.16 cents. So we have code enforcement activity. Place address is 163. Stop, work order is four. Code ticket issued is 12. Notice that violation spent is 42. Citation issued is 72. Landlord discretion is completed 28. Posted unfit buildings is three. Fire calls for warnings, 16. And, um, the only thing I have is I want to commend these guys that are down here at the fire company for, they're doing that mural, um, and they got it. One of the firemen are actually painting it, um, Joe Stewart, and, um, basically not costing them other minutes time and stuff, so I'd like to commend them guys for doing this, um, Austin Goddard. And it does look fantastic. Yeah, and that's like a three-year project, so I think they're going to do in section, one wall here, one wall, and something like that, three years, so, and those guys, thank you. That's all I have, thank you. Roll call.
We have nothing for council's action, boss, I've got a minute, just to throw a couple dates out. Home rule.
Most of them.
Okay, our, our next regular escape agreement, the home rule, is Monday, August 25th, 6:00 PM, at City Hall. I think all of our vacations have been already planned at that time, because I'm just, I'm just the last person on vacation, so, uh, we should have a full complement of it. Also, uh, I wasn't at the last meeting, I was on vacation, but, uh, there are three dates that were set for public question and answer periods. The dates supposed to be Monday, September 29th, at a timing date, our timing and place to be determined.
I think the time is 6:30, the place is to be determined.
Okay, that will be 6:30 on the 29th. The next public session will be October 15th, and I was, uh, as you were saying, same time, 6:30, say.
Good.
Okay, and also the last public period, which will be the week before the general election, will be Monday, uh, October 27th at 6:30.
Correct.
Uh, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Treasurer.
Yes. She didn't give me any, just...
Our treasurer is on vacation, so we'll have the treasurer report next month.
But I think, yeah, but I always come to him.
Chief of Police. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for July 20th, juvenile arrests, 43 criminal arrests, four non-traffic arrests, 108 traffic citations, six traffic warnings, 331 parking tickets, 247 sweeper tickets, 22 code tickets. For total of 1,069 calls in July, with 3,654.9 miles for patrol. Uh, National Light Out was held on Tuesday, again, a very special thank you to everyone from the Schmoken City Crime Watch, again, they pulled it off. Um, great weather, and of course, I didn't get to see a little bit, but it went well, we got a lot of good closeted back. Um, I got to see the new patrol truck, it's here, I was able to touch it, so that didn't break somewhere. Um, they're working on that, that's scheduled for completion the third week of August, that'll be back to us, then it will go for lettering. Um, so that was doing well, and I just, I wanted to pass on, and the guys in council department know it, they have been doing extremely well on all aspects, so when I say that, I'm talking from just interaction of, of, of arrests, and, and it was a busy month for them, and, uh, they're all of them, I can't ask for anything, we're doing a great job. Also, on our three new cadets, I just got their second quarters, and they're making us proud, so, other than that, that's it. I just like to make a second chief to commend you guys on National Light Out, being, uh, is there, with this summer of May, I'm on the, uh, the amount of calls that you guys actually have to go to. Um, kudos to everything you and your guys do, and our, our citizens really don't know how active you guys are. Yeah, and I, I feel bad for National Light Out, we actually had off-duty auctions at the event, and we were getting back with the calls, they were taking calls, trying to close some of our calls at first with the priority of the calls we had. Uh, but it was, it was a busy day, it was a busy day. But thank you, Mr. Mayor, pass it on as well, thank you. Okay, next would be Tonya and CBDG.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Tonya Turp, I am the project coordinator for the City of Schmoken, um, the City CBDG grant administrator from the City Council government. And the hearing is going to start at 6:25. So, uh, the 2025 entitlement allocations of the projects selected by the City of Schmoken Council for funding with FFY, 2025 CBDG funds are as follows. The City of Schmoken allocation is $306,369. Uh, of that, we'll have City of Hogg administration of $53,700. Demolition, 30% at $75,800. A code enforcement project with $50,000. The, uh, bus stations of $20,000. And street reconstruction phase three of $106,869. So we will need a motion, uh, and approval, a second and approval for that, those funds tonight. Um, I also want to take note to the resolution to apply the 504 officer resolution and the fair housing resolution that we talked about in our last meeting. Um, the, uh, fair housing resolution was read at the first hearing. The 504 officer is the city administrator, Robert M. Sladey. And, um, the resolution will be approved and passed at our next meeting of September 8th. Are there any questions, uh, by the audience? Can we have the motion, uh, at this time?
So we'll accept the motion to accept the CBDG proposal at court time is... Motion is in, presentation ended. Motion by Mr. Caleb, we have a second. Any questions? Okay, roll call.
Councilwoman Arnold.
Yes.
Councilman Andrew Gammits.
Yes.
Councilman Caleb.
Yes.
Councilwoman Boyer.
Yes.
Mayor Hockley.
Yes.
Motion carries demands three.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Tonya, for all the time you put into that. Okay, next would be the events. Oh, I'm sorry.
I missed a workshop meeting, and I'm taking...
I'm sorry.
Actually, I have no, nothing for action for council tonight, so that's good. I want to let everybody know the streetscape project is still on schedule, special thanks to Val, thank you so much for helping foregate last week, really appreciate that. Also, um, the H B C crib project, the whole region incubator project, or actually innovation buildings, that's going on nicely. And, uh, yeah, nothing for council to vote on tonight, so you'll have a big demand next month, though, yes?
That's true.
Oh, yes, that is true, so the, um, the environmental review is done, so I leave that to, yes, the, sort of, move forward, so that's a huge thank you for everyone, okay, but, thank you.
Thank you.
Here.
Anything from our downtown manager?
Yes, uh, so the T mobile grant is still out there, I will know and answer for that by the end of the month if we succeeded in applying. Um, two days ago, I received the final contract for the citywide flight inventory that would include a hundred buildings. I, since it was two days ago, I tend to get it on the agenda, so I'll make sure everybody gets a copy for the next meeting to vote on, sort of like task force and spend the money on that. Any, any questions on that?
Need for a, we should receive a report.
Yeah.
Uh, the event on August twenty-third is, uh, Brian Daniels, he's a country artist, his producers that produce all his music is actually Three Doors Down. Uh, he won Country Music Artist of the Year in twenty eighteen. He's going to play from seven to night on the twenty-third with a special appearance of the guitarist from Three Doors Down. On Friday at eight P M. at the Heritage, there'll be a meet and greet, anybody can come get autographs, meet the band, uh, Chet Daniels, I mean, Chet Roberts from Three Doors Down, and John Seesock, two-time world champion monster truck driver. He will be there for the meet and greet, and he'll be downtown during the event. On Saturday from ten to two, there's a V I P side-by-side ride where you can ride with the the bands and John Seesock, but you have to meet out at the trailhead at A O A A, and you have to buy a day pass, I already have an A O A A pass to ride along, and you have to have your own side-by-side. Um, actually talked, uh, John Stare into getting in a side-by-side that day with John Seesock, to go out through the mountain, which would be interesting and fun.
Who, uh, Mr. Seesock, well, you're in the, 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 or back one?
Not, with the amount of people and the way the event's set up, the logistics and the safety are not there, but hopefully in the future, there could be something with that.
Just for the kids to look at.
Mm-hmm. Um, and that's everything for me.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Bailey for that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Okay, next we've got the approval of events. We do have the four events that are listed on the agenda. Would we like to pick those individually, or would you, can we do one or all four together? Of course, I'm, we, we, could you make a motion to that, if I, Mr. Taylor? Motion by Mr. Taylor to do, to accept the four requests. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs.
Question.
One and one question.
I have a question, I don't see, um, the nine-eleven, uh, warrant, so I filled out a request, Sarah, but I don't see, is that the same thing as the question? Yeah, it's something from the, from, one September eleventh.
I didn't see the law, but it's.
At the workshop, everybody got a copy of it. So you see, in your, in your, you, you, you might have, you might have not here. Well, let's, let's, through these, whenever you address.
At that.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Any other questions?
Regarding the hospital.
If not, roll call.
Counsel Bill O'Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Andrew Jennings.
Yes.
Counsel Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Bill O'Knight.
Yes.
Mayor Robert Lott.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous for all four of those events.
So with respect to that item, what we should do is make the motion to amend the agenda to add item five, to approve the nine-in-one-one, um, ceremony, that's how to say it, approval, that's how to say it. Now this is just to amend the agenda, and then, um, that will then have to be published, and then for a pre-publication, the whole agenda in five four hours, if approved. Do you have any questions?
I'm all in.
I think it's possible.
I'll second it.
Now I have another question, if I'm the one who what made it, who is, do I have to understand? I'm about it. Just, you don't have to, but just, I will go ahead.
At least it's mine.
This is only to seven, maybe.
This is just to amend the agenda. The agenda.
This isn't approving or, this, this first motion is merely to approve it as a, as an item on the agenda. So is the motion second?
Do we get any questions on adding the number five to the agenda? Okay, roll call.
Counsel Bill O'Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Andrew Jennings.
Yes.
Counsel Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Bill O'Knight.
Yes.
Mayor Robert Lott.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. So that's now, or if the other number five, the motion.
Yeah, so do we have a motion to approve item number five, which is the nine-eleven program? Motion by Mrs. Moore, seconded by Mrs. Arnold.
Any questions?
Any questions? Who, I, is, uh, yes, Peter.
Yeah, this year, it's from the, uh, I asked Mr. Pelkis, a retired firefighter, volunteer firefighter, and also Mr. Craig Rhodes, I'll hear this, as well as America. Hold on a minute.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any other questions? Roll call.
Counsel Bill O'Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Andrew Jennings.
I asked you.
Counsel Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Bill O'Knight.
Yes.
Mayor Robert Lott.
Yes.
We have four days.
Can I take a steward at this right now?
Yes.
It's just need to be published.
Republish.
Okay, next would start new business.
Request the motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five extension calls as considered. Excuse me, Mr. Secretary. When you go to indicate these are, yeah, some of it's two individuals, correct? That's true, yes, I was going to make some, some, people. There's two individu- individuals, uh, that have been submitted to me by the actuary, and this goes on, that we're, and, and now, we have two individuals. Mrs. Deborah Schlosser, um, the actuary saying she was eligible on the cap which is sixty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents monthly. And the second one, Susan Whitner, she's entitled to seventy-two dollars and twenty-two cents monthly. And like I said, this, uh, is prepared and provided to the city administrator by the actuary for your own pension services, and this covers, uh, those for the actuary, so, um, in his, his calculation, that that's what they're eligible in twenty-twenty-five. So you leave the motion second to authorize me to send notification to the pension company that city council of the city of Schmokene has granted permission to proceed.
Yeah, and this is yearly.
That's correct.
So it's normal business. Uh, do we have a motion? Motion, okay. Motion by Mr. Taylor, do we have a second? Second by the counsel of the lawyer? And roll call, or questions, I should say, any questions?
Mrs. Whitner is, uh, for all Whitner's widow.
That's correct. Mrs. Schlosser, Mrs. Schlosser is the widow of James Schlosser, the local police officer, here in the city of Schmokene. Thank you, sir. These are, these are two qualified individuals for the actuary, and the total, um, twenty-four.
So we have a motion and a second, roll call.
Counsel Bill O'Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Andrew Jennings.
Yes.
Counsel Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Bill O'Knight.
Yes.
Mayor Robert Lott.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, and we vote for the pension company to proceed. And request the motion to revise revised five thousand dollars on the code enforcement this full year twenty-twenty-one contract to downtown streets reconstruction. And so we need a motion to pursue.
Correct, this is money that C B D G money is just getting, it's getting moved from a different project because we aren't able to use it every moment in time. So do I have a motion?
We have two weeks, and, and, we have two.
Yes.
We rest losing this five thousand dollars.
Correct.
I just didn't understand.
So do we have a motion on the other one?
Very.
Second. Any questions?
Counsel Bill O'Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Andrew Jennings.
Yes.
Counsel Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Bill O'Knight.
Yes.
Mayor Robert Lott.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous to pursue. Um, so I guess that takes us to number three on the agenda now?
Correct.
Okay, at this time, we have one to swear in.
Yeah.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll accept a motion to approve the hiring of Danielle Heagle for the position of part-time code enforcement officer effective July twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. A motion.
I'm looking, Mr. Secretary. That will be at sixteen dollars an hour, and, uh, after ninety days, um, it moves up to seventeen dollars an hour.
So we got the motion by Mr. Taylor, do we have a second?
A second.
Any questions?
Counsel Bill O'Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Andrew Jennings.
Yes.
Counsel Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Bill O'Knight.
Yes.
Mayor Robert Lott.
Yes.
Motion carries, congratulations, welcome aboard, you will be sworn in.
Next we'll have a request to motion to approve the hiring of Kobe Fertelli for the position of part-time parking officer effective August eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, and that would be at the rate of.
That would be at the rate of ten dollars per hour, and after six months, that increases to ten fifty. So we need a motion.
Do we have a motion?
A second.
Any other questions, we rise to this action? If you want to.
Roll call.
Counsel Bill O'Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Andrew Jennings.
Yes.
Counsel Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Bill O'Knight.
Yes.
Mayor Robert Lott.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries unanimous, congratulations.
Take it easy on you.
I agree with a lot of models out there, just like to thank council for getting this approved and done. Been a long time coming, and boy, I'm happy mayor. I better wait a minute. Kobe, try to get people up there. And then, yeah, voting out.
What's the question?
We'll, we'll run out of, yeah, we'll run out of guys.
Joe, you want to take picture?
Make it air, right? Just get it to one at a time, you.
Yes, all in yell.
Hide it not. You've got haircut for your deal. That's actually hide it type, I like it, even as probably. See, we was all for a half a hand, we're looking. You were still laughing. Oh, I know he's smiling, yeah.
Sorry.
We can actually have a side.
Oh, we'll, we'll get, we'll, we'll have that.
We'll, we'll know why y'all just picked up. Yeah, get it, so.
Before we leave today, we're going to put out.
Let's for this.
Right, we're in Schmokene. Right, I have a lot.
I, Danielle Heagle.
Hi, Danielle Heagle.
To solemnly swear or affirm.
To solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support.
Obey, obey, and defend.
Defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of a code enforcement officer.
And that I will discharge the duties of a code enforcement officer.
In the city of Schmokene, Pennsylvania, with fidelity.
In the city of Schmokene, Pennsylvania, with fidelity.
Congratulations. Handle correctness.
No.
That's okay. Mr. Patel. This is on my desk paper I'm bringing.
What's wrong?
This is on my desk paper I'm bringing. You ready to start?
Start.
Okay, I, Kobe Patel.
I, Kobe Patel.
To solemnly swear, to solemnly swear, that I will support, uh, support, obey, and defend, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Uh, discharge duties.
Of meter attendant.
Meter attendant.
In the city of Schmokene, Pennsylvania.
City of Schmokene, Pennsylvania.
With fidelity. Congratulations. I'm good, thank you, everyone, they know, thank you, thank you. What's more? Congratulations, you find it, well, we finished.
Yes.
Just to clarify, that Mr. Fratelli was sworn in as parking attendant, okay, not meter attendant. Okay, anything under unfinished business?
I'm sorry.
Boards and committees?
I'm sorry.
So listeners, recall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I did a revision under the lease on the city of Schmoken and the basis recovery club, uh the building located at two ten East Independence Street, Schmoken. Uh this is just a extension of the term, the lease terms on the death of this date, being until June, February, two thousand twenty-nine. So this is not on, on the agenda, so we'll need to put it on next month's agenda.
Next one.
Next one.
Just an extension, correct?
Yes, just a four-year extension. What is this? Also, I prepared a lien, a legal lien, a legal uh twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty four dollars and ninety-four cents for the property located at two four five seventy-sixth street, Schmoken. Uh this amount is reflective of demolition and engineering costs um that were used for the teardown of the property. So that'll be filed in the quarters. Uh one other matter, on Friday afternoon, there's a hearing on a petition that filed two or three months ago regarding uh properties that were listed for sale. Um the city last month had made a motion to forgive the outstanding taxes on that property contingent on the other municipal entities also doing that. From my understanding, the county commissioners did that, as well as Schmoken and its school. We got an email today from Charlie Gary indicating that the R B A is interested in four of the seven properties, not the entire seven. Uh we hear that they're going to talk tomorrow. So it sounds like if all the entities are forgiving those taxes, the R B A requires those properties um get along with the tax setup and use funds to be rehabilitated and all that. And that's all I have for this. Maybe steps.
Yes.
Thank you. Now we would have citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments? Okay, with that, then we no further business. We'll join or adjourn our meeting at six fifty-one. Thank you very much.
Sure.